Okay, here we go. See if my mic is on. Yes, okay. This meeting will come to order. The roll call will show that everyone is is hooked up on our Zoom here. The pledge of allegiance will work as follows. We'll recite the pledge of allegiance and in the back on the screen will be the flag. So we can start the pledge now. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. All right. That went better than a preschool fire drill. Let's see. The next one would be to approve the agenda.
There is one addition to the consent agenda?
Yeah. You do, folks, were emailed an addition to the consent agenda. I've got a hard copy here. Are there any other? With those added resolutions, are there any other questions, comments to the consent agenda? And if not, is there? Can we just assume it's adopted? Otherwise, we can do, we'll have to do a roll call vote. What's your preference?
Lee, can you maybe just say what that added on consent agenda item was? And if you're willing, you wanted to take do the, you'll do a better job than I will.
Yeah, it should have been item B8 for highway and its adopting a resolution authorizing our right of way specialists to submit to the Minnesota DNR an application for an easement across state lands.
Thank you. Then it's on the record.
Oh, yeah, okay. The, that's a good point, Steve. All right, well, if there's no objections and and you don't feel there's a need to vote, we can move on to the Human Services Board consent items. Can you do them both at once then?
Or can I just, I get one or two questions or one question on the consent agenda?
Go ahead.
It would be under the construction management services for the facility, which would be number four on the consent. Just, just maybe for clarification, on page, packet page 13, one of the last sentence talked about the, I guess I just want a clarification when it says adjusting their scores. What does that mean? It was, I think it was that RFP instruction management services?
I'm looking at that now. And if we had Steve or Kevin here, they could probably answer that quicker than I could.
Well, and it might have just been when they tallied them or something. I'm not quite sure what.
But it's part of the scoring process. Yeah, after interviews, the evaluation team.
What we did, kind of a two-step approval or review on those, we did a a written submission from all of our contractors that we went through or each of the approvers went through and placed a score on all the different categories we identified in the RFP. Out of that, we picked the top three candidates and did a, well, this point, a Zoom meeting to ask a few more questions and review some of those items. After that, we went back and readjusted the scores from our first round based on what we learned in the second round.
Okay. Because when I first read it, I thought, oh, okay, was it adjusted just to make, make the choice that you wanted? But that makes more sense when you do the second round and retabulate. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions on that? If not, we can move to the discussion on the consent agenda under Human Services.
I want to pull number three on the consent.
Which one?
Number three, the aerial photography.
Okay.
And Mr. Chair, don't we need to vote on the regular consent agenda before we recess and move to Human Services?
That was the question I was asking. If we should discuss them both? And then when we're done discussing them both, pass them both with one motion?
I think we have to pass them separately because we have to be in our human service.
We can do that.
I hate to say it, I like your idea, but.
I'm asking your opinion and I got it. So we'll do it that way, no problem. Okay, we're still on the consent agenda relative to the aerial flight. And the question is?
I'm just looking at the cost of that. We got a cost of $225,000. Three years ago, we had it done for 150 and all of a sudden it's going up a considerable amount, $75,000. You know, that's a little bit of, of an expense that maybe could be looked at. We do it every three years. Is it necessary to do it every three years? Do we put it off? Do we, do we look for a different bid? I think we might have somebody from staff to address that.
If you looked on page 11, Joe, it kind of said that there was a discount last time, too.
I see that, but then I would like to put that into the motion rather than just go ahead and approve the 225 because that's, I think that's what it states or in the original.
And Joe, I think it's the, that would be the high that looked like they were going to go to bids and try to get a discount again.
Jeff Johnson, are you there that could?
I think that's in there. But if you wanted to reflect that, certainly understand it.
Jeff Johnson? Could you comment?
I did discuss this with Jeff Johnson accidentally. And the point is, is that it looks like the interval between flights in terms of number of years is going to get shorter instead of longer because more and more people are using those aerials for a wider variety of purposes. I was surprised at how often the aerials are used by the sheriff's department for the recreation of crime scenes. Public safety is using them more and more. Back in, oh, we first, well, when we first started doing aerials, that's a dumb way to put it because our first aerials were done in 30s.
Nope.
Anyway.
You know, so I will speak.
Oh, you're there? Okay, take, fly away, Jeff. Talk about the aerial.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Jeff Johnson, property services director. Just want to talk briefly about the aerial flight. It's done every three years. Most counties do it every two to three years. And I've highlighted for you some of the real benefits of having an aerial flight flown on a regular interval basis. I can speak directly to the property assessment area because there are some considerable savings. One is in mileage. Another is in the amount of new construction and the taxes it brings into the county each and every year. And I'll speak to that just briefly. For instance, in the last five years, our new construction totals have amounted between 94 million to 157 million dollars a year. And based on some studies and some analysis I've done, without current aerial photos, it's not uncommon to see that some new construction would be missed to the tune of maybe 10%. And so the additional tax dollars that are brought in by having the benefit of new aerial photos ranges anywhere between 94,000 and 157,000 dollars a year. This is quantified by looking at a study that was done in Franklin County, Pennsylvania, a similar county that had about 71,000 parcels like we did. They paid $400,000 for aerial flight. And in their very first year, they brought in, I believe it was $137,000 just attributable to new construction that was missed. So that's a, you know, just one example of where we would benefit by having regular flights done every three years. Another thing I like to look at is the mileage savings in the assessor's office. By not having to send people out and looking at all these properties annually, just this last, last two months alone, we've saved $6,300 in mileage. And what I anticipate, if we're not able to do physical onsite inspections to the level that we've done in the past, we will save somewhere around $14,000 a year. And partly because we're able to devote and use aerial photos to assist us in finding changes in properties, not just buildings that have been erected, but changes in land uses, changes that are brought about by different traffic patterns. And that's just one example in the assessor's office. The other thing I'd like to point out is that when you break this down to a unit of comparison, if we're talking $225,000 and we have 53,000 parcels that were responsible for directly here in Stearns County, that amounts to $4.25 per parcel in over a three-year period of time. And that cost is $1.42 per parcel, which I think is, you know, a reasonable price. When we add the city of St. Cloud, the total parcel count is 71,000 parcels. And that brings that cost down to $3.17 per parcel or $1.06 per parcel when it's spread over three years. So I think that's a lot of bang for the buck. We're hoping to capitalize in some of the competitive pricing because of the downturn in the economy. And just this morning, right before we went live, I asked Chad if he would provide me with a budget proposal. And Eagle View, which is one of the vendors that we've used in the past, had provided some costs here. And I'm not quite clear. It looks like it's a two, two proposals or two project proposals over six years. But the costs that were quoted there were $176,000 per year, which would bring that cost down to about somewhere around $2.50 per parcel or let's say 80 cents per parcel over a three-year period of time. So we've always been good stewards of taxpayers' dollars. And we certainly don't want to pay, you know, 225,000. We'd like to pay something closer to 150 that we received last year. But what I see in the end is that we received a 25% savings in 19, in 2017. We were able to purchase a product of $200,000 for 149,440. Based on current pricing, that same product might be in the neighborhood of 225. And if we're able to vet out the vendors and get some competitive pricing, we may be able to see a realized savings of 50 to 60,000 dollars, which would then would provide us with the savings in the neighborhood of 25% once again. And this is what we're hoping to, you know, capitalize on. When I look at the change in cost over three years, yes, it's, it's a lot. If we're going from 149 to 176, that's a 12 and a half percent increase approximately over a three-year period of time, which is, you know, in the neighborhood of about 4%. So it seems to fall within the realm of, of what other expenses have been running. And I can assure you that, you know, throughout the property services division, like other departments, we have tried year in and year out to come in under budget, which we have done. And it does allow for, you know, us to save money for the benefit of the taxpayers. But more importantly, we're also able to update our current resources so that we're able to make meaningful and wise decisions based on the current information that's available.
Well, the assessing department is just one example. We have many departments that make use of this, of the imagery, too.
Okay.
I'm not finished yet. So my, I got a couple of other questions. You know, you talk about the price of the aerial photography going up. I think we've seen a significant decrease in the price of fuel. And so their costs in the air probably are cheaper than it was back when they did it three years ago. Also, are we, with the other cities involved, St. Cloud, Stock Rapids, Way Park, Gold Spring, Albany, Stock Center, are they reinforcing us at all for, for this cost? Or they're using those photographs as well?
Commissioner Mersky, this is Chad Martini. Jeff and I spoke about this yesterday as well. With recent changes in state legislative law, we can no longer charge partners or vendors for use of aerial photography. And, you know, unfortunately, all our local governments understand that with a simple request by law, Stearns County has to share that photography with them. Now, we did have some contributors last time. SWCD was a financial partner with us. But the reality is with, with budgets and with that state law, it does become difficult to get funding partners for a photo like this. And with regards to fuel costs, speaking with the vendors in 2017, going through the bidding process, and again in 2020, it hasn't changed. Putting the planes in the air is actually the cheapest part of procuring an aerial photo. It's really the backend processing and then the software that Stearns County ultimately buys as part of that package. That is really where the proprietary costs drive up the photo.
One last question then. What about, we're approving 225, are we not? Or can we, can we approve 175?
Well, Commissioner, I don't want to speak for Jeff Johnson. He can certainly chime in. But with respect to the bid process, although we have some verbal commitments from one of our partners on, again, added discounts. And part of the, part of the discount is they package a two-year flight program over six years. But there's a no penalty waiver to cancel the second flight. So it's an accounting trick by the vendor to, again, get that cost down. If there is a benefit to the COVID-19 pandemic, it's, again, some of the discounts we may be able to realize. But of course, we, we don't have those guarantees. We don't have that in writing. And so when we request a budget adjustment, really have to look at what the retail price is and then hope through that bidding process that when we start vetting these different vendors, that the prices will hopefully be realized as we hope. But to ask for that discounted price could potentially put us at a disadvantage. You know, because there's no guarantees in life. There's no guarantees that what we're getting from the salesman live out in reality.
Okay, just from my own experiences about making bids on, I don't know if that would be, Chad, a disadvantage, but by telling them you're willing to pay up the 225,000, that tells them what your price would be. So I've got a different opinion on that, so.
Okay, any other questions, comments on the consent agenda? If not, we call for approval on the consent agenda. And I'll call off the, for your vote by district. District one?
Say, Lee.
Oh, wait a minute, we need a motion to approve, don't we?
Yes.
Do you want to make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Terrell. Okay. District one on the vote on the motion?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four is aye. District five?
Aye.
Okay, well, we got through the consent agenda. The, now the Human Services Board consent items. The, any questions about the two items that are shown in that, in that consent section?
I have one question for maybe clarification on packet page 34, which is the second consent agenda item. Can Melissa or somebody that might know, where they, when you get the chart of accounts payable claims paid, what, whether are the refunds agency error project and refund, rev recap due?
The, can you hear me? Oh, hi, Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator. And in answer to your question, I believe that those are just our normal, when we do revenue recapture. And so at the end, every month, we're just required to report it to the board.
What's the refunds agency error?
Um, actually, I, I will get that detail to you.
Take this call at another.
I'm having a hard time hearing what you're asking, sorry.
There's a refunds agency error line on that tabulated form. What, what does that mean?
Um, actually, Randy, do you know what that line means?
I, I think that is paying the collection agency their share of recapturing revenue. So we get the full amount and then they get a cut of that. And I believe that's what that is. But I agree, Melissa, we should probably check that out and get back to the board on that.
Okay, thanks.
Well, should we suspend approval of that consent agenda until you get that clarification?
I'm just curious what the error part of it means. Like, was it something, we did an error or somebody, you know, or they didn't bill us right the first time? So we had to pay extra?
Voting on it now? I was kind of curious about that, too, because it says project on it, too. It says revenues agency error project. So that almost sounds like there's some special looking at it. So it'd just be nice to know in the future.
So these payments have already gone out. So you're, you're kind of approving those retroactively. So it doesn't hurt to approve them because they already have gone out.
But I think approve the, the consent agenda. And then if Melissa can get back to you on what those details are, I think that would be a good road to go.
As, you know, this item is always called for information purposes only because most of those claims have already been paid.
It's just clarification, I guess.
Correct. And I think the only reason it's on my agenda is it's just related specifically to Human Services. And I think by statute, it's on mine. Otherwise, it would be in with the whole county's normal claims paid.
Okay, I'll move the consent agenda. Steve?
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second?
Second, Mersky.
Alrighty. All those in favor, say aye, District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
District four, aye. District five?
Aye.
You know, back oh, several years, up until several years ago, the consent, the Human Services portion of the consent agenda and the regular consent agenda was all in one section of the agenda. The question I'd have is, should we keep doing it that way? Should we continue to split those? Or as the discussion was going, Melissa started talking about, very briefly, about one consent agenda. Anybody have any ideas on that on the fly here?
Well, if the, if the law would allow us to do that, I would suggest we do that, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
End of that, Dr. Willie?
Yep, we'll check it out.
My question would be is, if we're doing, go back to normal, whatever normal is, and we're in the regular boardroom, then that would allow Melissa maybe to skip part of the meeting and work and do other things and come down for her portion unless she wants to sit through the first half of the meeting. Because if we have questions then on the consent on Human Services, they can address them in the Human Services portion.
I didn't have this discussion with Stearns County staff, this discussion with, with City of St. Cloud staff. And what they liked about this particular meeting format is when they're part of the agenda, it's not under discussion, they could turn the meeting off and multitask. Our, I'm sure our staff listened to our county board meeting with nothing less than rapt attention. But should that be a consideration in the future, that might be a possibility in interest of efficiency and possibly additional rest for. But that's a consideration. I think we've, we can move on to reconvene the regular board meeting. And our next item then would be under administration and update on the virus crisis.
Yes, and we should have Renee and Erin on the line to give us that update.
Good morning.
Hi, Renee.
There we go. A very short presentation, Erin and I, this morning, board. So the two slides that I'm going to be to are actually two items that are on the website that we're keeping up. They both are focused on what is happening in Stearns County. So this one summarizes most of the case information that we have for Stearns County. This is actually from yesterday's data that we had. So you'll see Stearns County, our total number of confirmed cases is that 1,744. And you'll see that the bulk of those cases are still in what we call active, which means that they are still in their about 14-day period of isolation that they're still considered infectious. Those cases, 87 of them were needing some type of hospitalization. And 32 of those were admitted into the intensive care unit. So not quite half of them were in some intensive care unit at some point. Again, these are total numbers, just so you know. Hospital and in our conversations with them don't necessarily share with us how many people are in the hospital or intensive care unit as a way to keep people's privacy. We have unfortunately had 10 deaths related to our 1,700 cases. And those, about, not of our total number of cases, about 19 of those or 19 of them have been related with some congregate care facilities. So that's a long-term care or like group homes setting. So we're, we're not quite half and half with male and female. And you can see the bulk of the ages right now are the 20 to 40. This is the second item we wanted to share. Again, this is on the Stearns County website. This is a map that gives the cases by zip code. And we wanted to put this on there, too, so people could see that we do have cases throughout all of Stearns County. So there's not an area that really hasn't been impacted by this disease. Some are more than others. But at a, we're seeing it across Stearns County. And this slide over to Erin.
Good morning, Erin Tufti from Emergency Management. We wanted to review quickly some of the goals and objectives we continue to have as a counted, coordinated county effort. So first, looking at isolation and quarantine is what we are managing out of the Emergency Operations Center. This involves. Um, this involves um case investigations, um contact tracing, as well as providing essential services of those people who have tested positive um as we work throughout the process. Um, we are collaboratively managing this effort with both Stearns County and City of St. Cloud staff. Um, it is all being done virtually um at this time um in order to um keep people um in their safest places. Um, we move to education and support then. Um, we are continuing to manage the hotline. Um, just this week, the hotline did go back into the Human Services Department, um where staff internally are helping to maintain um that assistance to members of the community, um mostly providing guidance, um if people have questions about where they can get additional information. Um, we as well are doing some outreach to businesses. Um, if we are seeing cases um that are clustering in local businesses, um, we are reaching out to them to provide a connection to us, um as well as the Department of Health, if they have any questions or are looking for guidance. Um, sometimes businesses reach out to us as well, um asking for where they can get materials and information. Um, and so we are maintaining that um connection as well. In the Emergency Operations Center, um we continue all operations virtually. Um, at this time, um, we are maintaining the flexibility to both expand and contract as needed. Um, and part of that we're looking at with things such as the hotline moving back to Human Services. Um, it is no longer being managed out of the Emergency Operations Center uh because that coordination and call volume is certainly able to be done with staff that we have available. Um, and then lastly, we're starting to look at a business recovery model. Um, and what that looks like is we need to be able to um start bringing services back into our normal operations and maybe don't need the coordination of the Emergency Operations Center, but appreciating that we are not to that point yet. Um, we do need to continue to have this joint effort with Public Health, um Emergency Management and the support of all counties and state departments. Um, but certainly be attuned to the fact that the changing situation, we need to be flexible in the EOC. Um, and then lastly, I'm looking at our continuity of operations. Um, and looking at the coordination with administration on potential impacts for staffing um moving forward um in the event that we are seeing large numbers of county staff that are impacted by COVID. So with that, um, I think we are available for any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions for uh Renee or Aaron?
Uh, Jeff Mergan, I have a few I'd like to uh ask the question I asked last time. I was wondering if anything had been done as far as the addition of suicides that are happened because of this and domestic violence, all of those statistics, the relapses in the alcohol and drug abuse. Uh, is it those same questions I asked last time, was, did you find any information on that?
Yeah, Commissioner Mergan, um, we have, right now, our data analyst is looking um at the the data. It's hard to find anything more current, um, but but we are looking into that. So she is working on that right now. Um, and I don't have anything at this point yet to be able to share, um, but we are, we are looking at that.
Okay, one thing I did find, this is from the National Bureau of Economic Research, that uh it says every 1% hike in unemployment rate will produce about a 3.3% increase in drug overdoses and deaths and 1% increase in suicides. That's on the National Bureau of Economic Research. And so we need to start considering, is this more doing more harm than good with all those additional deaths? Plus, I also had contact with a person this past week. He was a cancer survivor, severe cancer survivor, and he needs blood work every now and then. I don't know how often, but his blood work has been put on on hold and he's quite worried. And 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 he also told me about another lady that whose uh breast cancer radiation has been put on hold. So I'm worried that this is causing more harm than good with this shutdown.
Okay, uh, any other uh questions for Renee or Aaron?
Uh, Lee, I got one. Uh, first of all, Renee and Aaron, thanks for all your work that you're doing on this. Uh, I'm curious, usually when I see All American Honors, I'm pretty excited, but I see we're in the top five in the country right now for number of active cases or anyway trending, which isn't necessarily good. Uh, with the active cases, um, those are uh ones that have been confirmed, I I would expect. Um, with that, are we checking the spouses or and other family members automatically or only those with symptoms?
Um, so right now, testing is is being done only for individuals that have symptoms. Um, however, uh, there is a pretty low tolerance for people that have uh or symptoms that is a active case at this point. So if someone, um, their spouse was positive, um, and the person has one symptom, a headache, um, we have enough tests that we're able to actually test those. So uh, we don't automatically test them unless they have symptoms.
Um, if there is a person with symptoms and their spouse has that, do we not count them, though, unless they've been uh properly identified um by having the test and confirmed?
Right, right. They they're only counted because they've gotten the test and it's come back positive. So none of these are presumptive positives, uh, which is what we would call someone who wasn't tested um that has symptoms and had some exposure. And again, at this point, um, what we're hearing is um Centra Care uh who's the primary tester. Um, but that testing is available and so people should, if they have symptoms, go ahead and call your provider um and uh talk through whether you need to be tested or not.
Also, I I believe uh it was Sunday, we had no new cases or one of the days there we had no new cases. Was that just that uh we did not get the information, the results on those tests?
Yeah, there's lag time and testing uh and then getting results back and then reporting those to the Department of Health. So it's, that's just a lagging of of um test reporting. Um, but we did peak, you know, with our numbers um about a week and a half to two weeks ago, and our numbers um have been slowly going down. Now, we do have um a testing um event that is going to take place tomorrow at Pilgrim Pride. Um, so we may see a spike in our temp, in our uh tests, again, or our positives because we're doing some very targeted thing. Um, and so we might see an increase. Um, we'll have to see what comes out of that uh test result.
And then one final question, about how many tests to do are is coming out of those Stearns County area?
You know what, that, I don't know the answer to that. Um, I would have to approach Centra Care and ask if they can give us an uh an approximation of how many tests they're doing. Um, but I I don't know that.
Okay.
So Renee, are having all these positive test, positive tests a good thing? Or, I mean, is the tracking of it?
Yeah, it's it's actually a good thing, I think, um, because it allows us, what happens in some of the work that's being done in the Emergency Operations Center, um, is the contact tracing. Um, so once we identify that a person is positive, then we contact that individual and talk with them about isolating and their their immediate contacts quarantining. Um, and if we can isolate and quarantine those people, um, that's the best way to actually contain this as opposed to doing uh lockdowns like we're currently doing. Um, so I think if we get to the point where we can identify these people individually quickly um and isolate and quarantine them quickly, um, we, uh, that's how we can control the spread. Um, so that's, that would be the eventual goal. So, yeah, I think it's good that people test. Um, this morning on our EOC call, and we are current and up to date with all of our um new tests. So our staff have been able to contact our new positives, um, talk with them and um isolate and quarantine them, which is exactly what we're trying to do, so.
Okay, thanks.
Um, any other questions uh on this matter? If not, uh, yeah, go ahead.
You can go first, I'm fine.
Oh, I'm gonna ask if uh we can work on the resolution now. If you want more details on the discussion, go ahead.
Actually, the, and I mean, I'm, this hopefully will be fairly quick and then we'll move to that. I, a lot of questions about uh congregate living situations and since St. Cloud, the St. Cloud areas in three counties. Um, I know you've been giving us our reported cases. Do we have any more information from uh kind of more regionally?
Um, well, we've seen an increase in uh our, the number of cases around Sherburne County and Benton County as well, not to the level that Stearns County has. Um, I don't know the details of theirs, other than I do know that on occasion uh we've been notified that there is a case in a congregate care living. Um, but I I don't think it's um that they have huge outbreaks anywhere. It would be cases here and there, I think, in those settings, so similar to ours.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on this before we move on to the resolution? Okay, can we talk about the resolution then uh for opening the county buildings?
We sure can.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as you know, we've been able to provide nearly all services via mail, Dropbox, phone, email, and with the waivers um that have been granted to us uh by the Department of Human Services. Um, there's very few services or programs that we that we've not been able to provide. And uh, as you know, the governor's new order wants, it keeps people working at home that can. And if we, if we do begin to open up to the public, we have to follow the CDC and MDH and OSHA guidelines uh for things like social distancing protections for um both the public and our and our employees, um have the ability to quickly work with someone that has symptoms. And we need to be able to communicate all of that to uh to our management and all our staff. And so what we've done here is we've created um what we've called a phased public reentry of our buildings. And really, um, what we're planning to do is to stay pretty much status quo right now with a couple of exceptions, um, at least until June 1st, when then we think that we will have many of the controls and procedures in place, particularly at the service center, so that we can begin to open up to the public by appointment only, so that we slowly, slowly reopen. And as you all know, we've just finished adding on to the service center, and there's a number of departments that are moving from the administration building to uh the service center. And so in the meantime here, we're hoping that we can conduct, make some of those moves happen and so that we're opening them up in their new location rather than try to open up here and then open up um at the service center. And so what you have before you is a resolution that refers to the summary that 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 we sent you. And then actually, we have a a more detailed document that'll help guide our our management, supervisory and and staff. And so I've asked uh Assistant County Administrator Steve Pamas to just briefly run through this um phased public reentry plan. So if we could get Steve on.
Okay, I think I'm on.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Um, good morning, again, I'm Steve Pamas, I'm the Assistant Administrator for the county. Uh, we have, as Mike has been uh telling you, have been developing our reopening plan in a way that's structured and phased to try to do this in a way that, again, continues to provide services to the public in a way that is efficient and safe uh for both staff and and members of the public as we go forward and in in compliance with all the federal and state and other guidelines uh that are out there. Um, I'm going to see, it's not going to let me share um content, so I'm just gonna uh walk through this summary, I I believe you all have it, so I'll just um try to go through it uh step by step. I want to start with uh Section 4, which again is talking about um county buildings operating on um. All right, she's telling me I should be able to share now, so let's see how this works.
It's working.
Alrighty. All right, I'm starting in Section 4, looking at uh county offices opening under a phase approach. Again, as Mike indicated, we have been able to uh operate virtually all of our services um through the last nine weeks, there through the use of Drop Boxes, staff um operating remotely, interviewing clients by Skype or some other online service uh through online portals for property services or other services uh uh or using social distancing in the field for those uh services that are offered uh remotely. Uh, our goal would be to continue to do that, um, for all services in what we're calling Phase 1, during which time we are going to be implementing engineering controls uh in the service center. Kevin, I think Kevin's on the meeting with me and so when I'm done, Kevin can talk about the actual uh engineering controls being put into place uh at the service center to help make these things um happen in real time. Uh, Phase 2, again, which would be on or about June 1st, when those engineering controls are in place, would be to open up uh buildings to services that can be provided only uh face-to-face inside our our buildings. Again, there's very few of these that have to be done in this way. The two that um come to mind uh at the top of my head are really from the auditor's office. One is the um filing for um elections, uh which is a service that can be done online um and but can also can be done inside the building. So that would be one service and probably the only service that we would allow inside the administration center. Uh, the other services are passports and driver's license renewals. Those are two services at the license centers that can only be done uh in a face-to-face manner. Um, so in Phase 2, again, opening up services by appointment only, the only services that would be opened up for the license center would be passports and uh the driver's license renewals. Our IS team is working on creating an appointment system uh that'll begin as public-facing, to allow uh members of the public to sign up for appointments. Luckily for these services, because of our tracking systems, we generally know how long each of these services takes so that hopefully the appointment process isn't bogged down or running behind. And uh people have an understanding of how long they'll need to be in the building. Security will have to be involved to know who's supposed to be in the building so that, again, we're allowing those people who are, have an appointment to come into the building, perform the services and then be able to leave. Again, this will help us control the number of people that are hanging out in um different lobbies of the building uh to help with the social distancing. Um, our our goal is to, again, run these services only and continue to operate all of our uh remaining services still online and remote uh for that second phase. Then as we get farther into the summer, again, we want to again be cognizant that as Erin and Renee pointed out, we don't know exactly uh how the summer is going to progress, our cases going to increase, are they going to decrease? Flexible as we open up additional services to the public inside our buildings. As Mike indicated, we are going to be looking at um having departments uh that are moving to the service center, not reopen to the public until they are moved over to the service center. Again, uh, that move, discussions are underway now for scheduling and and once those engineering controls are in place to make those moves happen. We are working um with all of our departments to put information on our website so that the public is aware of all the various services that we have and how they can access those services as we go through Phases 1, 2, and 3, or how many phases there are in this this process. I think I have a picture of one of the things that, um, so this is kind of what it'll look like. I think your screen should have flipped to a photo of Highway Department and Highway Services. So our website will be updated again continually as we go forward and make changes to how services are provided. Each department will be um working with administration to make sure this information is current. This is an example of what we're gonna put out there for Highway. And I have another example for the Sheriff's Office. And as you can see here, it talks about um how to request records from the Sheriff's Office, medication drop-offs, uh gun permits and jail visitation, and how and what hours those services are going to be available and how to reach out and contact staff for for assistance. Um, again, our our goal is to, as we can expand, that we would, again, uh, keep this information up to date on a regular basis so that the public is always aware of how they can reach out and access staff and services. and services. Going back to the plan, again, we are in the process of putting in partitions and engineering controls and barriers to help mitigate how much interaction between the public and staff. We are working on a marketing campaign, one internally for staff, on how the staff are to operate in this new environment as we start to reopen the buildings, but also a marketing campaign for the public as they start to enter into our buildings and, you know, signs about the symptoms of COVID, and if you have symptoms, we would ask that they try to reschedule their appointments if at all possible, or not come into the buildings, if that's something that we can ask. In terms of Section 5 on health considerations, we certainly have been working our HR department with all of our labor unions and management teams to work on making sure that we're implementing all of the state and federal legislation related to employee leaves. We are working very closely with public health and emergency management in terms of making sure that we're implementing all of the guidelines from the state and the CDC as it relates to how to handle workplace issues for ourselves, as well as the advice that Erin and Renee have been working with larger players across the county with, so that we're consistent with that message. And for our staff, we have most of them working from home, and so that has been very helpful, again, to minimize, spread within our own staff. As we go to expand our services and have folks enter our buildings, we discussed, again, how to have that happen in a manner that's in safe and do that in a way that makes everyone feel comfortable, as I'm sure have been around town. If you go into the grocery stores, Coburn's or Target, you'd see a lot of employers are having employees wear masks and have signs up suggesting that if you went through their facilities, that members of the public should wear masks as well. Our guidance is similar to that of Coburn's and Target and others, to say that if, you know, visitors are coming into our buildings, that we recommend that they wear masks. We're not going to require it, but we're going to recommend that they do so. Again, if people in the public are coming in and they are, you know, having symptoms, if they're exhibiting signs of being ill for whatever manner, we would advise them that, you know, it may be best for them to go home. Certainly, that is something we can't force them to do, but we're going to advise them for their own safety, as well as the safety of anyone else they're in contact with, not to just stay away from our buildings. We have a lot of hand sanitizer stations being put into the building, and again, Kevin can go through that when I'm done with this here. In terms of employee work schedules, again, we are going to continue, as I mentioned, to have employees work remotely when at all possible. Our IT department has done a fantastic job of implementing technology to allow most of our employees to do so and to keep services working as efficiently and productively as we've been able to do. As we are bringing staff back into the buildings, we are, again, practicing social distancing within our buildings for staff, such things as designating different bathrooms and different floors for the public versus staff, making sure that staff stations are kept as far apart as possible for social distancing when that's feasible, and installing engineering controls when it's not. And as you look in Section 7 there on that respiratory etiquette, that then moves into PPE. You can't do social distancing, if you can't do engineering controls, the next phase for risk mitigation is to, of course, have PPE for individuals. So again, we are going to recommend that our staff wear PPE if they, again, are not able to social distance and have enough engineering controls in place. We are not going to require it at this point, no different than we would for the public. We are certainly, you know, cognizant that some employees have been able to acquire their own PPE in, you know, eight, nine weeks, and so if they wish to wear that PPE because they're more comfortable with it, they certainly can do so. You know, the county doesn't have an unlimited amount of PPE. Administration and emergency management have been working very closely together to make sure we can manage the supplies of PPE that we have, masks, gloves, gowns, whatever it happens to be. And we are trying to make sure that we are prioritizing it for the areas that have the most risks, certainly areas like the Sheriff's Department, jail dispatch, you know, public safety staff have a higher risk due to the nature of their job. They just really can't do social distancing due to the nature of their work. That's not necessarily the case in all of our departments where social distancing is more feasible. And cleaning and sanitizing, Kevin can certainly talk about protocols and what items we've been doing in terms of trying to keep the buildings clean in the interim, and how we're going to adapt to having more people in the buildings and having staff flex their schedules and try to make sure we're keeping buildings as clean as possible as members of the public are in the buildings. And mask donations, thank you for the question, Commissioner Clark. And the county has certainly collected donations through the EOC, and so that is something that we do have supplies for those donations. In the donations management section, the EOC are not for the county, it's for the overall community. And so those are not ones that we would be using for our staff. That's, you know, for the healthcare workers and those folks who need it. In terms of supplies, right now, I don't think donations would be required. We have a plan for how to manage our supplies. You know, it's, keeping people working remotely really helps. Certainly, if we had all 950 employees back in the buildings and we were issuing masks to all of those people, we would go through our supplies fairly quickly. By having our staff able to work remotely, human service staff able to meet with their clients virtually, or certainly at summertime, so you can, you know, meet with people outside, environmental services can do that, and otherwise, the needs for PPE is lessened. And again, we want to really try to, you know, target the PPE for those folks who we can't do engineering controls and we can't do social distancing, to make sure that they have what they need. Are there any questions for me otherwise on the plan?
Questions for Steve?
If not, I see Kevin's online. He can certainly talk about what we've been doing for engineering controls and cleaning in the buildings.
Steve, I got one question before you leave. The concern about masks, you mentioned that, you know, we have guidelines from the CDC. You know, as we open up, and of course, as we are a hotbed in the state and in the nation, you said we're not going to require masks, we're going to recommend. Could we require masks in that we see Costco is doing that, we see Menard's doing that? And by actually requiring masks, would that increase the safety for our staff, but then also increase the safety for all people that are in the building, the other visitors, but also give those visitors a peace of mind that those coming in infected are masked?
That's, that's a very good question, Commissioner Pruski. Certainly, I think that if you have 100% mask usage, you are doing a better job of containment. Again, as everything that Renee and Erin have talked about, and everything that we've heard from the CDC, is that wearing a mask, unless it's the N95 mask, doesn't protect you, it protects those around you. Our goal in recommending masks was to be similar in line to a Target or a Coburn's with, you know, saying that we're all in this together. Again, that we're, you know, our staff have been asked to wear them where we need to for the protection of the public, and we would ask that the public do so to help protect each other as well as ourselves. To go to the point of requiring masks for the public, I would have, I think we'd have to also require our staff to wear it. And again, depending on the role that our staff has, I don't know that that is absolutely necessary. So again, if you're working in the jail and you are locked in a contained space and you're there with the inmates, I think wearing a mask is a vital necessity. If you're in the license center and you can't keep more than six feet away from a client, and passports, as an example, is a service that takes, you know, a length of time. It's more than just a couple of minutes for a tap. That would be one where I would say a mask would be, you know, something that we would want to issue and make sure staff are protected. There are some services in the county where, due to the nature, it doesn't necessarily work, or it's not as needed, and so it's hard to say. It would be a blanket to make it for all staff and by extension to all the members of the public. And if I can't do it for staff to say it's an equal treatment, it's hard to say that for the public as well. For Costco, I get it. They have, you know, one business and all of their people are in one building, and so it's easier for them to say, we require you to wear a mask to come in our building, because everyone has the same level of exposure inside that space, where based on the 17 different types of services that we provide, it's not one size fits all for us. Does that help?
Yeah. However, you're mentioning that we're going to be doing it by appointment, so people are not available to come in only by appointment, and those areas that are available are only those that are available by appointment. I would think that then we, in the vulnerable areas, we could not, could we not require a mask? So for passport and license, require the mask?
I guess I would defer to the board on where your interest lies. I think that it's, the position that we've stated, I think, is a reasonable expectation. If the board wants to go to the next level and require the public to wear masks in the building, that is certainly your right. Again, at that point, we would have to require staff who are interacting with the public to wear a mask to make it at all useful and consistent.
And we, particularly during a time where we're doing things by appointment, we thought that we would, you know, request whoever was making that appointment, make the point at that time that we would encourage them to come into the building with a mask. And of course, if it's an, if, as Steve has said, if it's something that's going to be close contact, then we would require it. Another thought that we talked about as we were thinking about having the public wear a mask, is that then there, we felt like there might be an expectation that we need to supply them too, and we certainly wouldn't be able to do that.
Right. It was brought up in some of our discussions, that not everyone who's a member of the public certainly has been able to find a mask due to scarcity, you know, or can afford them. And I see why Commissioner Clark, that's why her question on donations. And before the topic of donations came up, if we don't have enough to certainly supply, and so not wanting to ask the question, if you're going to make me wear one, you know, you need to give me one, and where do you then draw the line on that? Certainly, again, Commissioner Pruski, I think that, you know, Phase 1, we can certainly, you know, gauge how this works with just those people who are signing up for an appointment. If we need to, we can certainly change that recommendation as we move into a Phase 2 and have more people in the buildings. And, you know, I think that, you know, to Commissioner Clark's question on the donations, if we're seeing a lot of, you know, pushback from the public that they just really can't afford them, and the board is okay with us asking for donations for that purpose, we certainly can put that request out.
So, to that, and I mean, I'm really glad that, I'm thankful that staff has been nimble enough to really figure out how in general to be serving our residents remotely, and that's going to continue to be really important. Now, I've got probably a couple of questions for Kevin, too. I know bathrooms are a challenge that business owners are trying to figure out how to keep those safe, among other things. Or are we installing Lexiglas between interviewers and non, so the more we're able to do remotely, clearly the better. Since one has to come in to renew one's license, I've been getting a bunch of questions about this. That, if it's a limited entry, and would like to hear more about how that's going to work, especially if somebody has to take the written license. If we are requiring them to come in for a service, as opposed to them being able to do it remotely, I don't think it's really a board decision, but it would seem to make sense, without micromanaging, to have some masks available for people who want to put them on but don't have them. And when we eventually get to the point that we have some of our most vulnerable populations coming back in, that might even be more important. So just throwing that out there, I don't know that that really addresses what Joe is talking about, but if we're not, if we're really trying to follow the guidelines, and if we could get some more to make them available, that might make sense. Again, not pushing it on other people, but some of those do take a while.
Any other comments or questions on this? If not, if there aren't any other comments, we are, we do have a resolution to providing for the opening of county buildings. Does someone want to make that motion?
Still moving, Mr. Chair. Steve.
Now, second.
Okay, and we have a second. Thank you, Terrell. There's no further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. District 1?
Aye.
District 2?
Aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4, aye. District 5?
Aye.
Okay. And then just one last comment for Steve. If you just adjust, Steve Pamas, if you just adjust the blinds behind you a little bit and move your head or your screen down a little bit, it will look like you have a halo that might add some credibility to your testimony.
Mr. Chair, I think he looks like he has a little bit of an aura.
Yes, yes. It reminds me, when they were, when they were doing those specials on TV about the mad evangelist Jim Jones, you know, down in Jonestown, and, you know, he had this spiritual aura about him. But like the coronavirus, some of his beliefs resulted in dead people, but that's another matter. The, go ahead, what?
No, no, just saying thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. And if there's other questions, let us know.
Hang in there, Steve. I'll have a question for you in a minute. Okay, the impacts of the Governor's Order, we move on to that or not? Well, it's on mine, but we don't have to talk about it.
Yeah, I think that that was on the agenda as it was, I think maybe it was even put into the folders, but then it was changed and that was taken off.
I didn't get the most recent edition here. Okay. Well, then it's not. Well, then I've got some, I've got a bunch of comments on data quality, and you were getting into that. Both Jeff and Joe were edging around that particular topic. In Joe's case, he was talking about, and maybe indirectly, about needing better data and differed methods for collecting data, and how and what to count when collecting data relative to surveys. Surveys have proven to be inconsistent in their methods, and how the news media uses surveys, while part of their popularity by news media is you can schedule a survey. It's hard to schedule a tornado. So in terms of working a survey into their presentations, it's much easier. And plus, a survey, depending upon how good or bad it is, they can be relatively cheap, and they can move quickly from topic to topic. So the point is, is that the data quality that we get is inconsistent. So it's, you know, keep something for the public to keep in mind. The 24-hour news cycle back for us geasers, if back in the day when that was coming on board, what, maybe 20, 25 years, certainly 25 years ago, we just thought, gee, with the 25, with the 24-hour news cycle, we're going to have more information than we ever had. The reality is, it puts such pressure on the people that present that and produce that, is that it's actually lowered the quality of our news. of, of our news media. And when you have surveys and so forth, are they using the same methods, the same measurements? And techniques, that's inconsistent. So about the same report format. That even varies from county to county. While there's eighty-seven counties, I'm willing to bet that half of them are doing something along the line of what Renee and Aaron do. But I'll bet they all do it a little bit differently. And so when we contrast and compare data from county to county, jurisdiction to jurisdiction. It's going to have variations simply in how this is, this is collected. Relative to testimony from quote unquote, medical experts that we see on the media. I, I would just make the observation that in some cases, folks that media uses to add commentary. Some of these folks I doubt have met with an actual patient in the last decade or more. They're what I call desk doctors versus clinical doctors, clinical practitioners that actually meet with patients. And really, the, the clinical practitioners are the people that we meet with. And when we go in with a particular matter that, or ailment, or something that is causing us pain. If they don't get the diagnosis exactly right or the prescription right the first time, they'll try something else. And the the hope that's held out is that believing media is that in every case they get it right the first time. Well, some, I have to believe that sometimes making certain symptoms a little less painful enables one's body to handle the virus more readily than without that. So also, I'd like to know something about more information on pre-existing conditions. I think that with more consideration for that, maybe some of these predictions and these models would be based less on assumptions and more on hard data. Now, that's great in theory, but in reality, there's limitations to that. Ask Steve to hang around and talk to us a bit. Turns out that certain medical data remains private information for us as individuals ten years after our passing. And that really surprised me. Steve, you've done more homework on this than I have. Mr. Hammers, would you, would you amplify that a little bit?
Sure, I, to kind of give a synopsis on, on your points, yes, you know, data collection is something that isn't always consistent across the state or the country. Based on the city, county, or the healthcare system doing it. And, you know, we're only as good as the information that that we have and the people who are putting the models together. I, I think that the model that Minnesota has from the University of Minnesota and Mayo Clinic has been fairly good, the fact that it's been using data that's just for the state of Minnesota. We get the issue is that when you first start building the model, you have very little data with which to use to make the model run on. I know that, you know, they've been updating the data, updating the model with a lot of data that we as a state have been experiencing. And every time you add more data to the picture, the model becomes more accurate. And so I think it's, it's very helpful.
If that data is consistent, I'm, I'm, I specifically was thinking, you know, we're all talented people, but we're not mind readers. I was specifically thinking of that statute citation you gave me, thirteen point one zero.
Yep. And, and that was the next sentence I was, I was going to say is that, again, based on the question you had in one of our briefings. About, you know, at what point is it possible for the county or an agency to share information on those who have died due to COVID? That's, you know, HIPAA data for the healthcare systems for public jurisdictions, be it the state or counties. That is considered to be private data on individuals while they are alive. And then once they have passed, it is private data on a decedent after they have passed. And that is considered to be private data for ten years. So up until that ten year mark, there is no way for the state or the county or any public entity to release that information in any detail without the permission of the state or next of kin of that individual. Certainly that we can get aggregate data out of the state. And, but, you know, the Department of Health is probably a little overwhelmed right now dealing with just the daily, daily data that they have on positive cases without looking into the data on those who died. So unfortunately, there's not a lot for us to share at this point.
Yeah, I think that, you know, in this electronic age. Data privacy, I overall compared to when data, the concept of data privacy was conceived. I think in this day and age, with all the ways there is to get information on people. Just via the internet from your own desktop. Data privacy is almost a myth. So it's applied inconsistently. I don't have a cure for that or a suggestion, but it's reality. We're operating as best we can with the information we can, and it's not perfect. And that's life. So the, that's, that's where we'll leave the matter. I think I'm encouraged that we now get medical updates only on Monday and Friday. So we must have a little less new information. I think Monday and Friday, because we're a little smarter in how we interpret the information that we get. It's probably sufficient at this point. So our next update is at four o'clock on Friday. And so if board members and impacted staff want to partake, there it is. Anyway, sorry for the long rant, but the, how we do this job. Can't help but impact the outcome or the assumptions we make. Just even on our, just previous discussion on masks. You know, how you interpret what's going on. Has an impact in your perspective. So thank you, folks, for putting up with that. But I think there aren't any further questions on that. I think we could probably move on to Randy.
Well, maybe if I could just maybe add a comment. Sometimes too, I think it'd be interesting to, like, this last one had a picture of the state of Minnesota, how many cases were in each county. It'd be interesting to backslash that with what percent of the county is infected. You know, if we have seventeen hundred cases, you know, that's, what, what percent of the county population?
I, here's, here you can get to a hand grenade estimate. If you look at that map of the county and we know where people live. You know, for example, St. Cloud is heavily impacted. And you look where the population centers, the population centers are sort of kind of along I-94. You got City of St. Cloud, you know, greater, St. Cloud, Sartell Way Park. And then along the I-94 corridor and, and then the map is color coded. So that's helpful. Is it going to be precise down to the last ten people impacted? Nope. But it gives you an idea.
Yeah, actually, kind of along those same lines, I've been asking about if we could do something with showing rates. It really is kind of percentages, knowing that at least theoretically, there's an exponential amount more people who may be asymptomatic or not going in, et cetera. But it is helpful to know. The other question along those lines, I would have wondered, and there isn't a good way to do this, because let's face it, we as part of our quote unquote, as part of our freedoms, we can choose to say where we live, where we were. Any of those other things. So some people choose not to tell us that, but knowing also being able, for people to be able to see, you know, are we having higher rates in certain areas where people are working than not? Because that, you know, we totally agree with you. I mean, we know that a lot of the folks who where they reside might be in the bigger areas. We also know that we have a lot of people who may be exposed, I'll say it that way, to a workplace that's in a different part of the county. Because we we all move around where we live and work. So I think you're right, we can't be very precise. I think it would be great. Part of this, I was asking about our long-term care or our congregate living arrangements is our area, really. Our, our places are doing a really good job trying to keep, tamp that down, right? I mean, they're keeping people safe. We haven't had any huge outbreaks. You all, I get asked that a lot. And as some people are kind of chopping in the bit to get in those living places, how is that going to impact? So you're right, that is complicated, but it'd be good if we could see something more with rates.
Yeah, because I just, what I just, you know, if you take the seventeen forty-four and divide by our average population, let's say it's one sixty, you got a one percent. You know, infection rate.
I was kind of wondering about tests, too. Like, what are our number of tests? Is Cedric here willing to share that with us? I know the state shows that. What are? So then we'd have a better idea about what the percentages are too. With whom there's a confirmed positive, knowing that sometimes somebody could show up negative and they might be positive, show up positive a few days later. But kind of along those lines, Steve, I think that'd be helpful to know.
Anything else? I predict that in the first, about the first quarter of 2021. That board that's in place at that time will be, will become extremely familiar on population across Stearns County, because you will experience an exercise called redistricting. So as a result, you'll you'll have the latest and greatest data available at that time. But in general terms, we kind of know where the people are written. Anything else? Now, can Randy, you want to see if you can tell us on property tax collections?
Sure, I'm going to try to share a screen here. Let's see. Okay, you're seeing that chart that I provided? Okay. So collections went very well. Through May fifteenth, the deadline, we're at a hundred and two percent. And that is based on first half collection. So we always have people that pay the full year amount. So that's how you get over a hundred percent. And just to remind you, the board did exempt penalties for anybody paying till July fifteenth. So that's why we're looking at this. The last, this time, we would have been at a hundred and seven point eight percent, so about five percent drop. But this is very good numbers. I don't think the jurisdictions will feel any pain with this. So the collections came in very strong. So this is encouraging. The bottom box are the three classifications that we exempted from that penalty forgiveness. The parcels over a hundred thousand dollars. And then escrows and utilities, and escrows and utilities. And if all paid up a hundred percent, all those parcels are come in and have paid. The parcels over a hundred thousand, there are twelve parcels representing eight organizations that we have not seen payment yet. Now, the mail has been kind of slow, slower than normal. So we might still see those come in the next day or two. They were mailed on Friday, for instance. We might not have got them, you know, as of yesterday yet. So we'll, we'll continue to monitor those. But there are eight organizations that have not paid on the group that we've exempted. And I think the call volume has been a little higher than normal. And most of the calls have been individuals asking about the penalty forgiveness. The majority, so a lot of the people that haven't paid are individuals. So we'll continue to see, you know, elections over the next couple of months. We will do an extra settlement or two to the jurisdictions to get them their money when we can. I think this is very positive in the collection area.
So Randy, if those would have, twelve would have paid, would you be at close to your hundred and seven percent?
It adds up to trying to think about one point two million dollars. So we would have been getting closer. I didn't quite do the numbers there, but now I would add it another percent, maybe.
Are any of those in financial trouble?
Potentially. Yeah, hate to give the list right now because they may.
No, you don't have to. I'm just curious.
Yeah, no, there's certainly a couple, few of them on there that I just say are in some financial stress right now. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Then, you know, I, I can come back and report to the board either in the email or something else about these larger ones. So.
All right, all right. Any questions for Randy? If not, you're ready to move on and hear from Steve Holt House on future expenses?
Okay, and, and so for property or for tax forfeiture. We had another good year and Steve's going to have a PowerPoint to go over that in a little bit. Let's see here. I don't know how I stopped sharing this.
Pick up on top, Randy.
Why stop sharing this over here? Okay, sorry about that. Okay, now Steve will go over our forfeiture summary and then we'll have a motion that we'll need at the end of that.
Morning, Mr. Chair Commissioners. We do have an update to you for you today on tax forfeiture. Able to share my page right now. Okay, it's just been switched over to the presenter. All right, just to cover some of the history, as you can see the trend now for us, over the last ten years, we had the crash back in the late 2000s where that impacted our years, twenty eleven through twenty thirteen. And where it got us today, last year only forfeiting eight years or eight parcels. So that has been the trend that we have seen where we start serving forty to fifty properties when you start the process. And by working with the people, we're down to that ten or eight on the last few years that we can manage. Apparently, we have fifty-eight properties that remain for sale over the counter. In the last ten years, we forfeited on ten thou, or one thousand ninety properties. Generating ten point eight million dollars of revenue. Currently have ninety-seven properties in active payment plans. Have a monthly revenue base right around twenty-eight thousand. Good news is we are getting those people paid off. Twenty-one properties were paid off in the last year.
So Steve, I, I just want to make sure the board is familiar with the payment plan. So this is where we aggressively try to keep people in their homes and to have their properties. And we set up a three-year payment plan for them to do that. That's somewhat unique to Stearns County. And I think it certainly helps the citizens and also helps us to not have to forfeit on some of these homes.
Yeah, the, the public really seems to like that monthly payment plan versus the, the payment plan that is set up by state law called Confession and Judgment, which is an annual paint, a plan at the end of the year. So it's just easier for them to financially or manage their finances by the, on a month-to-month, you know, given a plan. This, I had forty-three properties. This, at forty-three properties on our current list to be served in twenty twenty. We have suspended our actions the last two months. And with those forty-three properties, there's thirty properties with structures on them. And that's also our trend too, where all these vacant lots we dealt with in twenty-ten through twenty-twelve have been, you know, been moved on in any way. But these are some of our high-risk properties that we're looking at for this year. Do have a potential salvage yard of five acre tract. Have a clean mechanic auto body shop, another couple condemned properties. We also have potential for the manufactured home park too. Those are some of our high-risk properties that we may feel that we may have a lot of costs associated to it. But until we get down that road, we're not sure where they're going to fall. Last year, we did have a good revenue year, collecting five hundred and twenty-six thousand. Some of our administrative expenses here, we have print and publishing, professional contractual. We did do one demolition last year, building facilities, some of their hours. Mileage supplies and also our county labor attributed to the tax forfeiture funds, total expenses of fifty-eight thousand, five dollars and eight cents. Currently, we have two hundred dollars set up in our cleanup fund. Or we're, we're going to realize at some point where our revenue stream is not going to cover our expenses, especially some of these demolitions. You can touch on this too if you want, Randy.
Yeah, so as, as you saw, the number of properties going down and the number of structures we have are going up. So our cleanup costs, as Steve said, are going to continue to go up and our revenues are going to go down. And if we don't have enough revenue set aside or money in this cleanup fund, then it becomes property tax levy to cover those costs. So we want to bolster up that fund sum to prepare us for future years if this trend continues.
Right, and especially with the potential high-risk properties that we see coming in the future here. So the amount with that recommendation of the additional hundred thousand to be withheld, we'd be dispersing three hundred and sixty-eight thousand to the existing jurisdictions.
Randy, I was just going to comment though, by, by cleaning up those properties, getting them sold, we get them back on the tax rolls. I mean, we do have money then coming back in to offset that deficit, do we not, or is, is that not an issue?
Oh, yeah, once they go back on the tax roll, that, that's a benefit for everybody, but it doesn't help that tax forfeiture fund. So, you know, for instance, we have that mobile home park that's possible. Mobile home parks have a number of special requirements that could be rather costly for the county. So we're going to be required to do what we need to do there and dip into that fund. If that fund wasn't there, you would be covering those costs with tax levy.
Hey, any other comments or questions on this?
So the extra hundred thousand that would come out of the collections that you have?
Yes, yep. So instead of, yeah, we just distribute a little less that hundred thousand. So yes, it's coming out of the proceeds we got from tax forfeiture sales.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on this? Back in the day, again, talking about data, we really didn't have organized data. But things are much better now. We're a lot more organized in terms of how this went forward. Maybe in retrospect, this was a benefit of the two thousand eight through two thousand eleven property crash, but we got better at it because of it. Any other observations for Steve or questions?
Just in regards to the mobile home park, I know that's a challenge, but we've got a number of mobile home parks, I think, on the edge as well. And I think those are issues that are going to have to be addressed through environmental. But it just seems as time goes on, we don't get a chance to address them. I think it's about time, maybe we, we get, get some of those things on the table. Improve the living conditions for those folks that are in those mobile home parks or, you know, go through the process of closing them down.
Anything else? I think that we would need to get a motion to approve the distribution of those forfeiture funds, excluding expenses. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'd move that.
Thank you, Jeff. Is there a second? Is there a second? Oh, we got a second. I missed who got it. All right. Okay, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. District one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
Three?
Aye.
Four, aye. Five? District five?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Steve. Okay, brings us to issues by commissioners. District one?
Well, obviously, we're still going through changing times and really appreciate what our staff's doing and all the communications. I am wondering about, and I did talk about this a little bit with Mike, some of our small businesses falling through the cracks on the federal funds. Is there, kind of what's our usage on our revolving loan fund? Is there anything else we can or should be doing to be making that more available for, for those who were suffering?
Commissioner Clark, the revolving loan fund that was established with the HRA, there's only been two loans made from that and both of those were ten thousand dollars. They've had some inquiries, but they were from businesses that don't, aren't located in the county. I think they've had to refuse a couple of loan applications. And I believe the HRA board now even extended the loan program to businesses within the city of St. Cloud and still haven't made any more loans. So I don't, I don't know exactly what all that means. It could mean that maybe we need to get the word out again, since this close down has been.
Something else we can do, kind of PR-wise, or people talking about it again on CASM or getting it out through JON? Maybe, I'm sure everybody's, quite sure all of us are getting contacts for small businesses who are all struggling and who have said the, you know, for whatever reason, the federal or the state funds aren't working for them. If we can make sure they know, maybe they'll take a use of this.
Yeah, I think, I think getting the word out could be helpful and I'll, I'll talk with Neil about that. I just had their report from him this morning because I wanted to have current information. The other thing that's happening in, in what the federal chair money is, one of the bills that is being considered by the state legislator in distributing those dollars includes a percentage that the counties would somehow distributor redistribute to the private sector. I don't know exactly how we would do that. I, I don't think we're seeing, you know, opposition to some of that money going to those businesses. I think what, what many counties are saying is we don't know how we would do that. What would be the criteria? And if there was some criteria laid out, perhaps that could be helpful too. But the real, the real problem with that is, I, I, you know, we wouldn't want eighty-seven counties administering those dollars in different ways.
And maybe perhaps since the legislature didn't complete the bulk of its work, it will be coming back, kind of understandably. Maybe we can also keep urging them to be, along with us, talk to federal counterparts about making these resources actually available to our businesses. I think there's some things we can continue to do. Okay, thank you. And Lee, I could probably talk about a whole lot of other concerns, but I won't.
Okay, we'll just add to your discussion, Carol. The HRA is one avenue. These economic development authorities are another avenue that businesses can pursue. What we, as a county board, underappreciate is the sophistication of some of our small cities relative to local economic development. The tools that are available, they're much more sophisticated than back in the day when the county HRA was formed. And that was the point I was trying to make when we hired our current county HRA director, that really we should be looking at whether or not we need that duplication that a county HRA presents. But that's been decided, so here we are. But also every once in a while, other entities get peripherally involved in this and can provide valuable insights. I'm thinking specifically of Sterns Electric. I have seen situations where their involvement has been helpful for some of this. So there are tools out there when someone's looking for help, though it's hard to keep your thinking cap on straight and make things happen for yourself. District two?
I don't really have anything other than mentioning a Memorial Day celebrations. Our observations are not going to take place around the state in great masses. And so just want to make sure we all recognize that, that contribution made by those that gave their full measure and sacrifice for the country. So we can all do that in our own way. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Joe. District three?
I just have a comment. I'm just hoping that the severity of the business hardships will finally be considered and they'll be allowed to prosper come June first.
That's it? You know, I think on some of those small businesses, they can make it to the end of the year. They're doing pretty dang good. But I guess the thing for us to remember is the small businesses, in my opinion, bore quite a bit of the burden here, you know, but that's a good discussion for another time. District four, that's me. I'd make the observation that, this is more, this isn't Steve's district, but finally, they've reached consensus on what to do with the old Melrose Church. And that's maybe a good example for us of how difficult and how long it sometimes takes to reach the obvious conclusion. And a lot of emotional attachment to the former structure. But when all is said and done, they're moving forward finally now. But man, it took a while to get there. It burned in two thousand sixteen. But they've got a plan for a ten million dollar replacement and I'm glad that group is moving forward. And then second observation I would make, in the, you probably didn't make this psychological connection, but when I was looking at the news item about the Albany Bar protest that got a fair amount of media and looks like there's a GoFundMe effort there and there'll be some legal action. It reminded me of one of the last residents of our old county jail. The foreign county jail, the one that was finalized in eighty-six that replaced that. One of the, one of our most famous occupants of the old county jail was a fellow who came into this area and he was protesting the power line. You remember the power line dispute in western Stearns County? And famous resident was Paul Wellstone. And so social controversy sticks with this. That tradition sticks with this area. And even before Wellstone, of course, you go back to prohibition. So the Albany folks are carrying on a tradition. And so it's, I don't know why that popped in my head when I read the article, thought I'd talk about it. District five, Steve?
And on that lead, you know, it's quite interesting, you know, because I came back through town, it was about two after eight o'clock. And it was, you know, reminded me when Albany has Heritage Days or Church Festival because they were all sitting across, you know, Main Street is a, the city has a park and a memorial.
Yeah.
You know, they're all sitting there and, you know, drinking beer, you know, conversing and, you know, some kept their distance. And I got to applaud, you know, the city of Albany for allowing them to do that responsibly. You know, without creating mass chaos or issues, you know, it didn't get disruptive and, you know, it was civil. And, you know, it was kind of nice to see that, that it didn't get out of hand. And then on the same token, I don't know if you read too, the city of St. Joe, their city council, you know, is agreeing to allow those bars and restaurants that have more open airspace outside. Because a lot of these places, you know, fifty percent capacity is probably not going to let some survive in the long run. So thinking that more outdoor seating, you know, they could spread out more and maybe get a higher capacity. I just noticed that with the city of St. Joe, you know, doing that at their meeting. And then going back to Carol and your previous comments, yeah, I think a lot of the small cities that have EDAs all take some monies too and put them aside, you know, for their own, you know, businesses in their communities too to help them, just like we, the county did. And then another issue, SBA has that economic injury disaster loan program. You know, farmers can sign up for it, business people can. But what we're finding here at work is on the farm side, a lot of them are leery to take that money because you have a security issue. You know, if you have a relationship with a lender now and then you take this low interest loan, you know, they got, they take security if it's over twenty-five thousand. Well, now your relationship, you gotta, you know, it's a little harder with your local financial institution because you have to work out security positions. So that's one of the things too, why I think maybe HRA and some of them aren't seeing people just jump on it. Because they're probably trying to not mix up cross collateralize, they harm their future maybe borrowing needs if that's the correct way to put it. By the way, yeah. Remember the protest, the power line deal?
Yeah, well, I remember the power line protest. I don't remember prohibition, okay? I have my, there are actual limits to my memory. So anyway, I have to read about prohibition.
Well, Lee, maybe some of the bars could raise money by chasing foxes with snowmobiles. That's something else you might remember.
Out there, good job, good job, Joe. Yeah. The, there actually was a song that was produced by a local group called the Hill Dillies. And they were sort of country folk group that did parodies on local news events. A guy that was a member of our parish, who was a local printer, fellow named Murphy. His son is an attorney here in town, was a key member of the Hilldillies. So anyway, I digress as I often do. I'm getting better, though, I'm taking medication. So anyway, if there's nothing else, folks, we scuffled through another one. And we keep saying that hopefully this is the last time we have to meet like this, but that's getting to be in the same category as promises like, of course, I'll respect you in the morning, but maybe there's hope. Alrighty, if there's nothing else, Dr. Willie's had enough, Joe's had enough, I've had enough. I'll just presume the rest of you have too, so this meeting's adjourned.
Aye.